Pastor Josh Frazier couldn't be here tonight, and he has asked our sheriff, Bill Wilkie, to fill in for the chap- as the chaplain, and to give the invocation. And I also just wanted to note that Senator, I mean Senator, there we go again, Bill. Sheriff Bill, Sheriff Bill Wilkie is also the chaplain for the North Carolina Association of Sheriffs. So if anyone would please stand for the pledge and the prayer.
Please have a seat, if you would. When given the opportunity to pray, I'd like to take that opportunity to put it in a little bit of context. And over the last few weeks, if any of you've watched the news cycle, there's just a lot of stuff out there. And it's tough on leaders, and it's tough on our citizens. And my hope is that the prayer that I offer tonight will give us some encouragement in the way forward, and our citizens some comfort that we are leading in a way that is honorable with professionalism and with dignity. Some of you may recall a picture from your history class of a young George Washington kneeling next to his white horse in Valley Forge. He was losing about ten people a day to disease. He was barely clothed. He took a beleaguered army and beat the largest army of the world at the time, and noted at Yorktown when Cornwallis retreated that it was nothing short of a miracle, a miracle. And he attributed that to prayer. A few generations later, the 1860s, our country was divided. North Carolina was heavily involved in that. In fact, we had our first law enforcement line of duty death. Sheriff Nolan was shot and killed by Bush whackers. The residents of this county and the citizens of this county were greatly divided. Regardless of what historians say, regardless of the arguments on either side of that conflict, ultimately God's plan was to resolve the question once and for all that no human being will ever own another in this country. And then finally Dwight D. Eisenhower, President of the United States, in trying to encourage troops who were met in a hail of German gunfire on Nemie Beach, wrote a letter praying blessings upon their survival and victory, and fascism was taken off the face of Western Europe. I say all these things to remind us that that God is still here. And that's the God I'm going to offer the prayer to tonight because as our country argues over politics and we get divided over things that are important to some, we tend to lose sight of the big picture. And I will tell you, the founders of our constitution here in North Carolina even recognize this. Starting in 1776, the preamble to our constitution in the state of North Carolina says, "We, the people of the state of North Carolina, grateful to Almighty God, the sovereign ruler of nations, for the preservation of the American Union and the existence of our civil, political, and religious liberties, and acknowledging our dependence upon Him for the continuance of those blessings to us and our posterity do, for the more certain security thereof, for the better government of this state ordained and established this constitution." The God of our history is the God that I'm going to offer that prayer to now, in the hopes that our citizens will have confidence in our prayers going forward, that we will lead with professionalism and with dignity and with honor and with integrity in a way that this county, this region, and this state can be proud. I would invite you to join me in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. I thank you for the leaders and the constituents that are gathered here today, and I pray your blessing upon them. I would pray that you would give us all wisdom, strength, clarity of thought, passion for doing the right thing without regard to our own selfish interests, Lord, but tempered with a humility that will help us to recognize when perhaps we fall short or make an error in judgment. Lord, give us strength in this, and as you have not failed the generations before us, that has brought us to this point in our country, in our state, and even here in Haywood County, that you would continue those blessings and inspire in us the idea that we can be better and we will be better despite the voices of negativity, despite all the news reports and the things that surround us, Lord. Remind us that you were with us. The God of all time, the God who was there in 1776, is here with us today. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen. Thank you. Thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, Sheriff. The picture you were talking about, George Washington kneeling, I actually have that picture in my office. When you said that, it just came into my mind. So thank you for that. It was a very, it's a very humbling and poignant picture of General Washington doing that. Okay, our next order of business will be a public hearing. And we're going to have a public hearing concerning amendments to multiple ordinances in the county of Haywood, North Carolina. We have our attorney Frank waiting to speak to that. Good evening, Frank.
Good evening. I have three ordinances in front of you today. This is, again, a part of the comprehensive review of all the ordinances in the county. Once we've gone through all of these ordinances, it'll be done here before the end of the year, we will submit the completely re-adopted set of ordinances to the, to the American legal publishing. And we'll submit them with a comprehensive sort of resolution at the end that authorizes them to make minor typographical internal reference, pagination, formatting corrections, okay? Because anytime you pass this many ordinances and you go through them with so many revisions, you'll undoubtedly have little internal reference errors, and they can be fixed easily by the codifier of the ordinances. And that'll be done at the time. Today, we've got three ordinances. All of them had different degrees of modification from the earlier ones. Chapter 110 is called Adult Entertainment. Adult Entertainment is one of those ordinances that, to me, as a new county attorney, just seemed weird. We've never had an adult entertainment facility in Haywood County. This ordinance was passed in 1975. We basically have changed nothing with it except making references to some state law things that just didn't get incorporated in 1975 when it was done. So we corrected that. We've also amended it to conform in very minor ways to the state law. So Adult Entertainment is revised, as you see. Subdivision and Pre-Development Ordinance took a lot of calories. The subdivision and Pre-Development Ordinance is very important to a very small number of people that has a big implication once it's passed and as it's operated. Every time someone applies for the subdivision of property, there are small or large number of lots being created, it passes through this ordinance. And the provisions of it that were changed, the substantive provisions of it that were changed, basically are not that many. There were, we tinkered with some road widths that were required by fire code requirements. And that was about it. The rest of it is language corrections, reference corrections. Chapter 160D, which was passed or became effective last year, that has to do with variances and appeals, the procedures for variances and the procedures for appeals for subdivision plaits and subdivision approvals, all had to be made and had to be altered to come into conformity with Chapter 160D, the state law. So we incorporated that in a bunch of places. And that's that. Manufactured Home Park, Chapter 157, it was a very, very minorly tinkered with just for the purpose of Chapter 160D compliance. That is appeals and variances. We brought that, we brought those procedures of our ordinance into conformity with the state law. So that's that for those. Questions that any of you have, these have been available at the, at the library here. They've been published, a notice of this public hearing was published twice in the mountaineer on the November 8th and November 15th. And, and of course, the proposed amendments in a redlined version showing all the changes was available both online and at the library and at the, at the office of the commissioners. Questions?
I've read through that, and it looked good. Okay, would anyone, all right, so I'm going to open up public comment for these ordinances, not the regular public comment. Does anyone want to comment on the ordinances that Frank mentioned tonight? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public comment period on the ordinances, the public hearing for the ordinances. Is that good? Okay, then next, I want to open up our public comment session, our regular public comment session. Would anyone care to address the board this morning, this evening? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close that portion of the agenda. The next order of business will be our constituent concerns. I did want to announce that most Haywood County offices will be closed on Thursday, November 23rd and Friday, November 24th in observance of Thanksgiving. The solid waste department, including the Wado Clanfield Materials Recovery Facility and Convenience Centers, will be closed on Thursday, November 23rd, but they will reopen on Friday, November 24th. Does anyone else have any other constituent concerns that they want to mention?
Just a special thanks to our first responders who responded to the fire down on I-40. I know the U.S. Forest Service is taking care of most of that, but I appreciate our folks and the backup and the support that they've given. And Sheriff, I appreciate that heartfelt prayer that you gave as well. So thank you.
Okay, next order of business will be administrative agency reports and presentations. And our first one will be their Farmland Preservation Program update. And we have Haywood Soil and Water Conservation District Board Chairman, Bill Yarborough, tonight to speak to that. Welcome, Bill.
Back in the spring, I met here with you. We had a group of folks that were concerned about some personnel changes. And that kind of happens when you have an agency. People come and people go. And there was a concern, would we be able to continue our work? And what I want to say tonight is absolutely, did it happen? And you know why? It's because of all of you folks. You folks took the time, the effort to support and be able to give us what we needed at the times that we needed it. Bryant, Chris, Christie with HR, folks like that stepped up to the plate and said, yes, this is an important program. And I just want to tell you what happened. We closed on three that we said we would, September 30th. That was over $458,000 that went back into the farms. And that, when you start about talking about money on the farm, when a dollar comes in, it don't just sit there and get buried. You know, you can look at the five talents in the Bible and how that worked. No, what it does is that dollar gets spent. It might buy a dress for the wife. It may buy shoes for the kids. It may buy tires. It may be able to buy some fuel. It may be able to pay the property tax that people need to have to be able to continue their business. But the main thing that that kind of work does, saves that farm, keeps it into farming, and it keeps that farmer there. Keeps that farmer there because it takes a dollar on it to make it. Today, we have some people that show here, Dwayne Van Hook is the district director. He's been working here for about 16, over 16 years now. And I'd like to introduce a young man, Haywood County fellow, Austin Ferguson. And he's taken on this role to be able to continue farmland preservation like we said we would. And he's done a great job because now, not only was he able, with all the help of you, Davis Ferguson came in because he were able to, with Chris and others being able to put somebody together and temporary, when Davis Ferguson came back, was able to put these contracts together. And then we have five different applications that got funded or approved for funding. A lot of work has to be done. $750,000 worth of applications that can be put into play next year. So what am I saying to you? You do the people's work. You're doing the people's business. Thank God for you. You already heard a prayer about that. But it's amazing to me, and you know, how many of you ever remember a fellow named Mac Magoo? Some of you may have heard of Mac Magoo. He's one that started WNC Communities many years ago in about 1948. And he run this program, and it's still going today. But he was a hero of mine for one thing, for a lot of things, but one, because of something he always said. And it's still in my mind how much that he was right when he said it. He said, "It is no limit to what a group can do when no one cares who gets the credit." So everybody made this possible. You made it happen. It's a program to be proud of. Haywood County is registered, is seen all the time about how they do this program and what it means. It's exemplary. And it's because of folks like you doing the people's business. So I wanted to thank you tonight. I want to thank all the folks that were involved. It took a team effort. And again, I don't see anybody say, "I took credit for that." It's because we did. So thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I appreciate you, Dwayne and Austin, coming out. Austin, it's good to put a face with an email now. Austin and I, I do some of these conservation easements. And anyway, they're, you kind of navigate them, don't you, Austin? We're dealing with attorneys in Raleigh, people, okay? So when you're dealing with attorneys in Raleigh, they have a different language down there than we do up here. So, and they like to email. They don't like to talk on the phone, right, Austin? So, but we'll get them. We'll get it straight. Or get them straightened out, maybe. Okay, well, great. That's great. Okay, next, our next presentation will be your Sheriff's Office in Review. We have our Sheriff, Bill Wilkie. Welcome, Bill.
Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to kind of give you the year in review for our first year. It's good. What am I doing with this? Oh, I got it. Okay. All right. And I'm happy to give this report to you. So very quickly, I'll run through these. One of the big events that we had this past year was active shooter combined training with emergency medical services. And this was conducted at Tuscula High School under the guise of potentially having an active shooter within our schools. There are a number of great things that came out of this in terms of what we learned, what we need to continue to learn, and how we need to respond. The most notable part of this is not about just what we learned, but the partnership that we established with EMS, the importance of communication, the importance of working together, and the things that have to happen to make it safe as quickly as possible. So that was a pretty significant event for us. And one that I'm very pleased to report to you has prepared us, God forbid, for an event like that. And we were going to be continuing that on a yearly basis. The next is SWAT combined training with Waynesville Police Department. We've established a close working relationship with them and our SWAT teams. And most recently, we were at the fairgrounds doing high-risk vehicle occupant encounters that involved all kinds of things from warrant service to maybe hostage rescue or even interdiction. And those are important because a lot of times when we need assistance and have to work together, again, same issues, communication, working together, knowing what each other's going to do, what their policies are, and how we can work together to combine resources to make sure that if we have a situation that requires use of these teams, that we're working together as quickly and efficiently as possible. The next one is crisis intervention. And if you don't know what crisis intervention is in a word, it's de-escalation. And what that is really is a commitment on our part to ensure that those who are suffering a mental health crisis, when they encounter the police, our first commitment is to take the time and to take the resources to first address their needs. This came out of Memphis in the 1990s where there was a tragic occurrence where law enforcement did what they were trained, and tragically, a death of a person who was experiencing a mental health crisis became deceased as a result of that. So there was an effort to provide training to law enforcement to understand and deal with folks who may be in that crisis. First of all, identify it. Second of all, respond to it. Only take action when absolutely necessary for the safety of the officer or that individual, but to take the time. And the training there is a 40-hour course. And I'm proud to tell you that every one of our deputies has been or is scheduled to go through CIT training. It's one of the requirements. It's, it's, not only does it reduce great liability for us if we, for our use of force encounters, but it also helps us decide as deputies and law enforcement officers, if and when we need to use force. We've evaluated that process in line as quickly as possible in light of this training. So it's excellent training and a step toward, in the right direction for taking care of our community, particularly in light of all the mental health issues we see. The next one is drone program. We've combined EMS and our SWAT team to have a combined drone program. The first time that we put this together was actually in a call out on Prevo Street in conjunction with the Waynesville Police Department. And the benefit of that is we have two drones in the air, so we never lose sight of what we're watching. In this case, we had a drone watching through a window what was occurring inside to determine what the barricaded subject may be doing, what he may be armed with, and how we may respond. But because of the battery life of these drones, we have to pull them out and swap batteries, and that can take up to 20 minutes depending upon what's involved. So having two drones, two pilots working in conjunction with EMS, we never lose sight. We'll put a second drone in the air while we pull one down to swap batteries. And we actually have pilots that were scheduled for trainings that were licensed to use these drones in any number of scenarios. We're looking at drones that have fleers, so looking for lost folks in the woods at night, thermals, for lack of a better term. You'll be able to see folks that are, you ordinarily wouldn't be able to see at night. So there's a, there are a lot of benefits to these drones and working together as a team. So EMS and the Sheriff's Office has been working very closely, also with the Waynesville Police Department, to make that a reality. One thing I would like to point out, and later in the slide presentation, you'll see the number of calls that we answer, but Shanda Morgan was Director of the Year as nominated by the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials. So all across the state of North Carolina, all of the 911 centers, of all the people that were nominated, Shanda Morgan actually achieved the Director of the Year across the state. That is a very significant accomplishment. And I will tell you, she has done a fantastic job on how she runs our emergency 911 center. I go by there often and watch the number of calls that are being handled. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit later in the slide. But that's, that shouldn't be overlooked. That is something that I take a lot of pride in for her sake and to be recognized across the state is significant. One thing that's not on this slide I'd like to talk about very quickly is our integration program. As you recall, six months ago in May, we hired a gentleman by the name of Bob Cummings. He was a integration programs manager. He screens everyone that comes into the jail, everyone that's in the jail. He looks at it for the possibility of providing recovery efforts, coordinating with recovery court. In some cases, has found housing, actually taken people to housing, actually taking them to programs, and personally overseeing their opportunity to succeed outside of jail. As recently as yesterday, I was walking through, talking to some of our detention officers and talking to folks and interacting with him on a regular basis. And it's interesting to note that some of the folks there actually ask for him that have not been there before because they know and have heard about him through other programs and/or through other folks. And so he has provided a wealth of information and a wealth of support for those folks who we are targeting or think are best targeted for reintegration in society and hopefully will not come back to jail. So very pleased with the way that's going. One side note that's also not up there I have to talk about is last Saturday, for the first time ever, I got in a race car and I raced eight other sheriffs, seven other sheriffs in Western North Carolina. Normally, I wouldn't mention that, but I'll tell you what's unique about it, the Sheriff Ellenberg in Rutherford County sent an invite to all of us. I sought some appropriate advice on how to drive a race car. Needed a little bit, not too much. And I wound up coming in second place. None of that matters, other than say that that trophy will be in the Haywood County Sheriff's Office lobby next year. I will tell you that. But what I took from that is the spirit of cooperation among sheriffs in Western North Carolina that I hadn't recognized before. Because it's in the good times that you build those relationships that are so important in difficult times. And just the camaraderie and the kinship among sheriffs and pledging support to one another. And I've seen it in other counties. Fortunately, we haven't had to call upon them, but I'm confident that if I have to, undoubtedly they will assist us with resources in difficult times. And that was just a way of getting to know one another and have some friendly competition. And I just have to tell you, it was, it was just a good time. And we represented Haywood County well. So are there any questions about all that? This is the busiest slide, by the way. Every slide's not like this. Any questions before I?
I was wondering, you know, Mr. Cummings that you have on staff, is he able to keep up? Do you anticipate maybe needing more of those type individuals?
That's a great question, Mr. Chairman. So it's evolving. And when I say it's evolving, I'm in constant contact with our sheriffs about their integration programs. He's gone to Transylvania County. Transylvania County actually has two, but they have a different setup, and they have a different jail, and obviously different needs in a different community. So his responsibilities are evolving into more reintegration and less from classification where I originally had him. But there's a portion of that classification that he still has to maintain awareness of. So the point that I'm getting to, yes, but it might not be another reintegration coordinator at this time. I want to see as we evolve towards that because the classification piece is going to go back more towards the detention officer responsibility. The other piece to this is we're getting substantial support from our faith community. We have a very large contingent of folks who volunteer to come in, and they're from all different types of faith. We don't, we don't control any of that. Folks want to come in and help. There are scripture studies and things of that nature that are held. I just found out yesterday, actually, there was a report that some of the inmates actually wanted to hold their own Bible study when the chaplain couldn't make it. And so our detention officers let them come out and do that, which is kind of significant and speaks very well to and speaks very well to that program. I say that to say this, they're also being employed to do something that we've, we've implemented just now called the Helpful Reminder Program. And so, Bob has asked them to take on the responsibility and look at everybody's court date and literally call them the day before and say, hey, you've got court tomorrow. Are you going to be there, and do you need a ride? So, what came with Mr. Cummings' job was also accounting vehicle, and this is what he's been using it for. Now, I'm not going to speak to that data. It, it wouldn't be wise for me to do that because we have a very small data set. I can tell you that it looks very promising from where I sit now, but that's all, that's all that I can say. So, to answer your question succinctly, Mr. Chairman, we may at some point in the future, I've, I've got to, we've got to advance this program and let it evolve to where it's most effective and fits for us. The likelihood is, is yes, but now's not the time. That's what I think.
Well, I appreciate you continuing the faith-based programs because they work, and we'll see that they work, you know, because it does change people's lives, you know, when they, when they have that spiritual connection with, with other. And I appreciate our churches stepping up and, and coming in and doing this because it really, they're, they're doing, you know, the, the Lord's work that they, that they should be doing, and, you know, that's in scripture, that you visit those in prison. So, I, you know, I really appreciate all those faith-based programs that are working like that.
And, and so, they have been effective, and I will tell you, I haven't found another jail in the state of North Carolina that has such a large program as we do. We offer actually four days throughout the week in periods in which the chaplains can come. Most of the other sheriffs I've talked to really just allow it on Sunday. That could relate to personnel issues, or a lot of things about that, but we have the ability to do it. And Captain Burris, our jail administrator, has an exceptional talent in organizing and, and setting those things up, so that it's allowed us to continue that four-day, a four-day-a-week program. And we can't fill all those slots, and there's a number of reasons for that. We've kind of put things on pause to reassess where we are, and after the holidays, we're going to look at bringing in some more folks who, that we have to be careful because we don't want to bring everybody all at once and, and put an administrative burden on, on some of our staff. So, but it's, and it's continuing to grow.
Great. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Any other questions? SROs. We've talked about SROs before. These are the schools that have SROs in them. One quick story about that before I move on. Labor Day parade, I walked through the parade, and I had a few of the SROs with me, and I got to tell you, watching these kids run out and grab these SROs, Officer Mickey, Officer Robertson, I mean, and I would name them all if I could. The, the kids have obviously built a bond. We were looking for that, that bond that an SRO should naturally have with the kids, that, that, I guess, that support structure, that, that relational ability, and I saw it consistently during that parade. I, I just, I was amazed by it, and, and I'll just tell you, I think, I think we did, I think we did well with that. So, as a county, getting those folks out there, just watching the kids run out and just give them a big hug, and it, we hit the target. I'll put it that way. So, any questions about that? All right. Next slide is our K-9 program. Let's see here.
I think we approved one last time.
Sir?
We approved one last time with the drug seizure money.
Yes. So, I was going to talk about that. We went from four to six. We have a K-9 on every shift. We've got to have them for interdiction, and I'm going to talk about some of those numbers in a minute for interdiction because that's, that's interesting information as well. But I wanted to highlight what our K-9 program has done with getting a total of six dogs. And again, one on each shift. We have two, I don't call them spares, but they're there to be used in the event one is unable to be on duty. We've, we have a dog accessible 24/7, and it's vital to our interdiction efforts, which I'm going to cover here very shortly. Any questions? Okay. Very quickly, CIT, total of 80 warrants. These were arrest warrants. Thirty-five search warrants have been done. This is, of course, January to October. The, the significant figure, it's actually more than $870,000. This is recovered property. This is what, this is the property that our detectives got back in a nine-month period of worth. A lot of that came, there was some heavy equipment that we found. There was one house that, that had a lot of very expensive items that were taken that we recovered earlier in the year. You want to talk about a happy homeowner? It's, it's, that's a very significant amount, and I'm, and I'm proud of them. I can tell you, they've worked very hard. They're carrying a very heavy caseload, too. They're carrying anywhere between 80 and 100 cases at a time, which is well in excess of the national average, which hovers between 50 to 65. But they're doing well with it, and we're getting the job done with that, and, and that's, that's what those numbers show. So, any questions about that? All right. Almost done. You can take a look at this. Only a, just going to add a couple things. You'll, you'll notice we have units in grams, and the reason that you see that units are usually in pill form, it's impossible to really tell what they're comprised of. So, when you see a unit as opposed to a, a weight, that's the difference. But what's noticeable or notable about this is just in fentanyl seizures, if you account for two-milligram dose, that would kill an ordinary person, that alone is 481,700 people that could have killed. That's what we've recovered in Haywood County. I want to say that number again because it's pretty significant, 481,700. It's tremendous. What, what I've done is tried to take a focus, and I'm not as concerned about numbers of arrests. We, in law enforcement, have typically, typically looked at numbers of arrests, numbers of convictions, and that's valuable information. But for me, this equates to life saved. And I want to know, to me, some sort, or have some sort of measurement of what we're doing to benefit the community, and while arrests do that, the amount of dope that we're actually taking off of Haywood County roadways and streets, I mean, this is, this, in my view, is the best way to measure it. I'll also tell you, this doesn't include regional numbers. This is just Haywood County. We are actively working with other agencies regionally and elsewhere. We're not just in Haywood County. So, any questions about that?
Bill, I'd, I'd be curious to know if you have an overlay on maybe this same slide compared to last fiscal year or the last year, what, what the trend on these numbers?
So, I actually considered that by the end of the year, it's going to be significantly more than last year. But you're really comparing apples to oranges. Because I have a, we have a different team, we have a different focus working on traffickers that I believe ultimately affects the user level. I think previously, there was a lot of focus on the user level, which is important. It's just different. And I'm, and going back to getting the number of, or the amount of dope off the street, I have worked to focus on the trafficking aspects of that, and I don't, I'll have 23, 24 for you next year.
That, that would be, that'd be very, that'd be very good to compare.
Yes, sir. Well, I, I was tempted to do that, but again, you're really, you, you're not, it's, it wouldn't be an accurate measurement because it was, there was a different team, it was a different approach, and, and they did very well at what they did. I want to be clear about that. But it wouldn't be, this is more, and it's going to be more by the end of the year, but because of that shift on focus, probably that focus shift on, on trafficking. But, but I will, my plan is to have that data for you next year along with some, some other things as we move forward. Any other questions on that?
Do you, going back to that slide, do you have any statistics about how this resulted in actually not just removing narcotics from the street, but actually removing the traffickers, traffickers from the business?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are you getting to that?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
So, there are certain operational considerations. I will tell you, I'm very encouraged by what I see. This is the tip of the iceberg, but there are some other operational, I don't want to get into where we are and what we're doing. That number's going to be significantly more by the end of next year. I will, I will tell you that we have an interdiction team that is second to none, and they have established very important relationships with other agencies that we're partnering with that's having a substantial impact in western North Carolina.
That's good.
That's where I have to, that's where I have to leave that. I had a pretty, as most of you saw on Facebook, had a tough guy sheriff approach, and I mean every word of that. And some folks are getting the message. That's, that's what I'll tell you. And we're not, we're not, we're not letting off that. But there's a natural progression to these things that I have to be very cognizant about what I put out there with that. All right. Moving on for calls for service, and this will be our last slide. The 24,322 Haywood County Sheriff's Office calls for service are ones that came into our 911 center just for the Sheriff's Office. The numbers are actually much larger. Fire, what you're looking at on the left side in the pie chart is for the entire county. What you're looking at on the right side is for the Sheriff's Office. So, fire through October was 11,185 calls. EMS was 12,207, and law enforcement, which includes Maggie, is 27,173, just law enforcement. If you come over and go just Haywood County calls from that law enforcement numbers, where you get your 24,322. That's why Director Morgan is Director of the Year, because she has handled this with a staff. She handled things through the flood. She, she has an ability to manage that call center that is second to none. And you're seeing a tremendous workload, and I spent some time in there, and I, and I watched how they work. And I've watched, even as, as we're looking at the Black Bear Fire. We have hundreds of calls that came in for that because everybody thinks they're seeing the fire for the first time. And we don't, we don't hang up on these people, and we don't not answer the phone. So, she has to bring in more people to answer these calls, and we actually had, well, we had to encourage someone not to get out and try to stamp it out at one point. And so, she had to, her people had to coach that individual through that. So, it's important that we have that there, but that's the number of calls that come in, and, and you can kind of see how it's broken down. One, one real quick note on the civil paper served and the civil papers. You'll see a difference in those numbers, and the only thing I'd point out is their calls for service under type of calls and actual paper served is a much smaller number. So, people will call for, for a service. Doesn't necessarily mean that that's the service that they need, and we give them advice. The actual number of that is, is smaller than those calls for service for, for civil papers. So, we have a very efficient civil paper or service of process section there in the Sheriff's Office. We've got six folks, and they're in and out all the time serving papers, and, and there is a tremendous amount of activity on that, and they do, they just do an exceptional job. So, that's really it. I just want to kind of give you the overall on that, and I'm, I'm, I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have. Doesn't even need to be in relation to this. I just wanted to kind of give you an overview of, of, of what we're doing with county resources.
Sheriff on the calls, going back to Commissioner Long's point a while ago, do you know what that number compares to last year? I mean, has it gone up significantly or about the same?
It, now it's about the same, but by the end of the year, it's, it, we anticipate it will be substantially more. That's what I would tell you.
It's still okay from a staffing standpoint?
So, I'm very pleased with the way staffing is going. Swearing in one today, swearing in two tomorrow. We have two vacancies in, in the jail, which is tremendous. Our turnover has really slowed there. We still have some, which we expect. I only have two vacancies in our operations bureau, one in CIT, two in CSU. However, we have so many in training right now that by the end of January, they're going to be out, released on their own, and we anticipate those slots to be filled. I'm projecting that by June timeframe, we will be at 100% strength. I'm cautiously optimistic about that because you always have turnover, there are always issues. But to be honest with you, and I would encourage you to talk to our deputies. If you see them on the street, ask them. I'm certainly, you, some of you are already doing that. If there are any questions about that, let me know. But they seem to be happy. They seem to be motivated. They're certainly out being seen and getting the work done. And, and what I have found over time is a supported workforce is the best recruiting force that you have. We don't have to spend money on going to recruiting programs and doing all that because they say, hey, this is a good place to work, come on. And, and that's what I think we're seeing. I'm cautiously optimistic, and I got to tell you, a lot of, that credit really doesn't belong to me as much as it does to my staff and Chief Trantham and the captains, or they have really worked hard to present ideas and programs to make these things work and ways to support our staff. Our, our staff is, is very well-supported, in my view, and, and I think that's what you're seeing in the numbers. So, my hope is that by June, we'll be at 100%, and we'll have a, we'll have a waiting list. So, that's my.
We appreciate your work and what you're doing here. It's obviously going in the right direction, and appreciate your work in getting our SROs in place so quickly as well. I mean, I've heard a lot of good stuff about that. As you mentioned, just seeing the, the faces from hugs and stuff like that. So, I'm hearing a lot of good things, and a lot of people's excited that we, we made those decisions. So, and you acted quickly in getting those people, the right people in place.
Right. Yeah, and it, it's not lost on them that they have support from this commission. So, to that, I, I say thank you as well because they see that it is, it is vital for our public safety to know that they're supported by their elected leaders and across the board. That's what's happened, and, and that's also what's behind our, our strength, you know, our, our, our lack of vacancies, so to speak. I've been in conversations with sheriffs across the state, and we're in a lot better shape than, than most, a lot better shape.
To follow up on that, Bill, do you see folks coming here wanting to work who are already qualified or utilizing the cadet program, or how, how's that balance?
That's a great question, Commissioner, and I appreciate you asking it. So, we, we actually came up with a program to provide for people the training through BLET at Haywood Community College, and they're actually going to be graduating in, or I say graduating, but getting through the FTO program and out in January. It's been a mixture of both. We just had a gentleman come today from a Sheriff's Office, the east end of the state, who has family here, wanted to, wanted to continue his work in law enforcement, and it was just a natural progression. So, our staff interviewed him. I contacted the sheriff in the eastern part of the state, and, and we will be bringing him on, or we're anticipating to bring him on, provided everything else is in order, which I think it is. And we get that from time to time as well. Deputy Rucker is another example. He came from Civil Police Department. He lives in Haywood County, and so he was driving past the office to go to work, and so I said, man, you don't have to go as far. So, and.
Good move, good move.
And so, he's, he's been with us short time, but he's done a very good job, and he's, he's a perfect example. And, and, you know, so it's a mixture, Commissioner, and, and, you know, we're always on the, on the, on the lookout for qualified folks that may want to work here. I feel very comfortable with where we are. I'm especially comfortable with, with how the staff has, has created an environment that fosters, you know, such good teamwork and camaraderie, and, and you see it. Just to be honest with you, you know, there's a lot of anxiety around a sheriff. When a sheriff walks into a room, particularly around employees and around other folks, it's like, oh, my goodness, the sheriff's here, you know. And to be honest with you, I had to get used to that, that role at times because I'm just not comfortable, you know, being looked up to, I guess, in, in ways like that because it's, it's just not me. And I'll tell you, in my walks through the jail and through the office, I don't, I don't sense that anxiety, but I, I see a sense of respect. But there's a willingness to, to, I would characterize it as, as, as a family environment. That was really my goal when I got elected. I wanted folks close. I wanted them to know each other in a personal way, yet be professional. And I think, I think we've hit that. I think I've seen it, and I think that is also why you're seeing some of those numbers. So, I'm, I'm very comfortable with that environment. It's, it's, it's a professional, friendly, but family environment.
It'll work between now and then to get that trophy next year, too.
That's, that sounds good. I've already got, already got a car in mind.
You probably had a bad set of tires on that thing, didn't you, Bill?
I, I got to tell you, it's a different.
If you'd have got some better tires, you'd have won.
Well, it's a different feeling to get in and drive a police car at full throttle, knowing full well at the end of it all, you don't really have any paperwork to do. And so, but it was, it was a good time. Any more questions, Al?
Well, I, I know as a citizen, just a private citizen, observation, you know, a, a visible presence is a, is a huge crime deterrent. And your deputies, the ones out on the, on the beat at night, I see them sitting in places that, that's very visible, and I'm sure it makes some guys, maybe with some bad intentions, think twice before they do something that's going to get them on the wrong side of your[1773.83]
And I'm sure it makes some guys maybe with some bad intentions think twice before they do something that's going to get them on the wrong side of your deputies. And so it, it's a, it's a comforting feeling to our citizens to see them out on patrol. Our county, we want a safe county. And that's, that's huge. So a visible presence is always a crime deterrent. You know, I, when I grew up, the Department of Corrections brought a chain gang around. They had bush axes. They cut the road banks off. They had a shovel, a pick, a matic, and they kept the coverets cleaned out where we didn't flood. They cut the banks off with bush axes. And Department of Corrections guys walked around with a big dog and shotgun. And I remember as a little boy, I thought, I sure don't want to be on that side of the equation. It's a huge crime deterrent. Plus, you know, we got the road banks cleaned off and the ditches, covers cleaned out. And I have talked to legislators since I became a commissioner to bend their ear about getting that back. Of course, with the legal situation, basically what I was told from Raleigh was lawyers shut that down, lawsuits. You know? So I guess we put them in a jail with air conditioning and a TV and all the amenities that a lot of people, our common citizens, don't have. But I'm certainly in favor of a visible crime deterrent, whether it's your deputies. I go on record as saying we need to bring chain gangs back. Go on record as saying that. And a lot of the prisoners would like to be out working.
So some of that is actually, I, I can't refer to it as a chain gang, but folks that aren't flight risks have been out. They've actually been cleaning up some of the county grounds around the sheriff's office. They've helped at the fairgrounds, lay out tables and chairs. And, and what we have, have found through that, interestingly enough, is you start to build trust relationships with some of those inmates that aren't a flight risk. And it, it also helps them to not come back. It, you know, there's, there's a tendency to think it's an us and a them. But the truth of the matter is, we're all people. You know, they deserve the human dignity that anybody else would. And, and that, that actually pays benefits you ordinarily wouldn't know. Matter of fact, we got a, got a compliment on, on one of the deputies that brought some inmates to the fairgrounds not long ago. And they had set something up and, and it just, we wound up actually putting a note in that deputy's file for all the things that he, you know, that he did. And got such a great compliment just for the way he treated the inmates and the work that got done. And, you know, it pays such big dividends because you have less of, I guess, an occurrence within the jail. There's, there's a respect there that goes beyond or doesn't have to approach force. When you, when you gain compliance through a respect relationship, it's a whole lot easier and we don't, we don't get sued. That's great, right? And so we, we're working to build that as well. So to, to your point, there's an element of that that we are actually doing right now. That's, but we don't do it on the side of the road because of liability, but.
Yeah, and please understand, I was referring to the state prison system, not, not the local jail.
Okay, okay, all right.
State prison system, we had. State prison in Hazelwood, knowing Craggy. And, and those were the folks, North Carolina Department of Corrections came by the bus. The inmates came out and did all the state maintenance on the roads. So, yeah, just, just to clarify that. So I, I appreciate, I appreciate the jail inmates. When I was at the fairgrounds, they, they did a great job, you know, to come out and help, so.
That's right. Well, be quite frank, there's some that just need to stay in there for a while until, until the courts decide they need to go elsewhere. Because they're, it's not all, it's not all sunshine and roses. There's some, some, we, we house some, some pretty violent folks. And so there's that aspect of it too. And sometimes that respect relationship doesn't always work. And so you go in and you make sure that you keep everybody safe by ensuring that they know you're going to keep them safe. So, but your, your points were taken, sir.
Sheriff Wilkie, thank you for your leadership in the county. I am somebody who wants to believe that a lot of this doesn't exist in our world, but it certainly does. And we've seen in neighboring communities where we were not in support of law enforcement, some very negative results of that. And it is the reason I ask you about those numbers. And then you equated it to human lives, how inundated communities across the country are with drugs and illegal activity. And so I appreciate good leadership. It's like Commissioner Long said, it, the presence in the community has been, to me, much greater than it had been, you know, maybe in the past. I see deputies all across the county and I think that that gives people peace of mind. And it's good to see that presence out there. And of course, I interact with a lot of them and see them. And I believe that morale is good and that's very important. You know, we, turnover in any industry or any business is key. Once you get the good people in there, you want to be able to keep them. You've trained them, you've outfitted them. And it's good to see that you're, you know, you don't have a lot of vacancies. That's really, that's really good and that helps us for sure. But I appreciate your leadership and appreciate what the guys and the gals do. And especially that communication center, you know, somebody recently told me about, I guess, Apple Watch Now has got something where it automatically notifies people, notifies the nine one one of certain activities. And they have to call and respond to everybody. So they, they have a big load. And that's one of those jobs, I say this a lot, that I could not answer the phones over there because I'd be hiding under the counter. And I don't want to stand behind a badge and a gun. And I definitely respect the folks that do. So thank you very much for your leadership.
It's an honor for me to serve and to serve this county. Thank the citizens for their support as well.
Good job.
Thank you, Bill. I appreciate your passion for this job.
Oh, thank you, sir.
I always did. I remember in 2010 when you first ran. You were the best candidate then too.
Seems like a forever ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and the next, number three is recovery court update. We have Judge Roy Logicarama and Judge Monica Leslie and Adult Accountability and Recovery Court Coordinator, Amanda Seay. Welcome this evening. Thank y'all for hanging in there.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners. I'm really thankful for the opportunity to be able to come speak to y'all tonight, along with Judge Leslie and Amanda Seay. Well, I just want to let you all know the recovery court is up and running here in Haywood County. It's a long time coming. It's here and, and it's here to stay. And so, and I'm confident about that. The, the official title is, is handed down by the legislature, but General Assembly's, the Haywood County Judicially Managed Accountability and Recovery Court. We call it just the Recovery Court for short. But we, we got the money approved last year, as y'all recall, as, as part of the pilot, the seed money that came from the General Assembly. We had it for, for two years. It was vacated to July first of two thousand twenty-two. So I'm worried with all those details. I think y'all are familiar with all that. But we got that extended to utilize those funds through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five, which we're thrilled about. So the first thing we had to do was hire a coordinator to, to run the day-to-day operations of our recovery court. And back on February first, actually we hired her before then, but she started on February first. But we hired Amanda Seay out of Jackson County. But she has worked in this district for about thirteen, fourteen years prior to that in probation parole as a probation officer. I, I remember working with her when she was a, for, for years as a probation officer. And she was a darn good one. And, and respected by her colleagues, respected by everyone in the court system. She was the ideal fit for this job. And we're very, very lucky and blessed to have her working in this position. She, she has hit the ground running, I mean, from day one. Judge Leslie and I, we are holding court between here and Murphy and everywhere between. It's impossible for us to run the day-to-day operations of the court. That's what Amanda does on a daily basis. You will hear from her shortly. She's put together a PowerPoint to go over with you. You know, we just can't start one of these courts overnight. It took us a few months to get up and running after we hired Amanda. We have to work with the treatment providers, have to work with our health department here in the county, have to put together a recovery court team, which includes members of the district attorney's office, members of the court. The law requires that there also be, in addition to a prosecutor in the court, there has to be a defense lawyer to ensure that everyone's due process rights are protected. And so, so we had to set that all up and that took some time. But we, we had our first participant join in, in late March of this year. And since then, we've had a total of eight that have, that have joined the recovery court. And we, we're not taking everybody at once, although that's going to start to change now in the coming months. Our goal is to at any given time have between eighteen and twenty in the recovery court. We, we're just not going to be able to have more than twenty because that's not practical. And we, we need to be able to give each participant the, the attention that they deserve. So we, we, it's a broad cross-section of Haywood County that's, that's, that are our participants today. We have two mechanics. We have a cook. I, I'm just throwing, we have someone that cleans houses for a living. And we have a registered nurse that's part of, so, as we all know, as everyone in this room knows, and I know you all know, substance abuse addiction does not discriminate based off race, religion, socioeconomic status, education, doesn't matter. So it, it, and that's what we're finding in our, in our recovery court. I wanted to make sure that we have, we, we open it to everyone who's willing to get help and go through a very rigorous, this is a rigorous program. You're in it for eighteen to twenty-four months. And Amanda will kind of go through that some more and Judge Leslie as well. You have to come before a district court judge every, once every two weeks, excuse me. And unlike the average person that's on probation, the average defendant that's on supervised probation, they have to provide drug screens two to three times a week sometimes. And they, the first few months in the program, you're, you're being monitored. You're under, you're subject to electronic monitoring, you're wearing a bracelet. I mean, they're following you. We know everything you're doing. And if you slip up, you're going to have to, we know. So when they come to court, and there've been a few occasions where some people have had to spend some weekends in jail. And, and that, that's the accountability part of it. So, but the incentive for them is after, and a lot of these, most of these folks have pled guilty to a felony charge. We have one, one that's, that pled to a misdemeanor drug charge. They're facing, many of these folks could be facing some kind of prison time. In fact, we have one that's, that's facing a number of years, maybe five or six years in prison. If, if that, if that participant fails in this program. I'm, I can't mention any names in here, but I'm pleased to say that she's doing phenomenal. And, and I, I, that's what I want, before you hear from Amanda and Judge Leslie, I just want to say, just in the seven short months we've, since we accepted our first participant, we have observed several lives be transformed right before us. And we see it. I mean, I mean, when they come in, most of the time, they're at the point where, you know, we give them a couple of weeks to try and get sober on their own. And surprised it doesn't happen, right? We have to order them into detox and they can't do it on their own. We're learning that it's, this is a learning process for us as well. So we have to send them to a facility over in Asheville called ADAC. There are a couple of other options as well. And for us to reach them, sometimes we got to get them sober. And, and we got to order them into that program. So, and once we get them sober, they, they may slip up on occasion, but at least we've got them where we want them, you know? So we've got one that's, for example, that's been battling substance abuse addiction on and off for the last ten, twelve years. And for the first time, this particular individual's been, been sober for pretty much the entire time she's been in, in our program. So, and so we're, that, I, I, just to be able to observe that, because that doesn't happen at a normal criminal court. I'm just going to be blunt. The way we normally deal with folks, we put them on probation. They, ninety percent of the time, they're unsuccessful and they go off to prison for six to eight months, sometimes maybe a year and a half, two years. I'm not talking about the people convicted of drug trafficking. I'm talking the ones convicted of some kind of possession. They're right back here. What do they do when they get out? They start using again. They commit other crimes that are associated with that. And, and we hear all about that. And, and some tragically end up homeless. And so we're, that, that obviously doesn't work. And what the statistics show nationally, when, with these recovery courts that started back in nineteen eighty-nine down in Miami, Florida, when done properly and properly funded and administered properly, the recidivism rates are very low. So there, there's some people that will still slip up. The addiction, it's, they remain addicts for the rest of their lives. But what I want to leave you all with is, is just, I can think of two right now, just off the top of my head, that since they've become, since they've joined the recovery court, these folk, one in particular doesn't have custody of the children, her children. The other one is essentially trying to re-establish a bond with her children. Just if we can get them sober, imagine the lives, the, for each one. You know, even if we, even if we get six or seven a year sober, think about how many other lives that touches. And how that, that, that person becomes employable. Which we, we have other programs that, through HCC that y'all may be familiar with, that some, through some grant funding that we received, that these folks, they can get a free education. They can go through the HVAC, they can learn HVAC plumbing, electrical and carpentry, all at HCC, free of charge, so long as they, you know, can stay sober and show up, you know? That's a heck of a deal. And then they become contributing members of our county. And so, so I'm looking forward to being able to come back and have you all hear these success stories. And when we have our first graduation, we will have our first graduation sometime either next spring or next summer, all five of you will be invited. And for, to, to be part of that. And, and you'll be able to hear their stories and so forth. And so I'm just, I'm really excited about where we're headed. There, there are going to be challenges. There, there are challenges. We, we, you know, sometimes when we're presiding over that court, there's good days and bad days, which we knew that was going to be the case. Because we're the only folks that are, that have significant addictions to, to controlled substances. So I'm, I'm happy to take more questions. I just, I, I know we're running short on time, but I know this is very important to all of y'all. I do want to tell all five of you, Mr. Chairman, and all the members of, of the Board of Commissioners, we are very grateful for your support. We wouldn't be up here talking, this wouldn't, we, we would not be where we are today without your support. We are very grateful and thankful. And I'll, I'll be happy to take any questions here in just a few minutes. Or if you have anything for me now, that's fine too. But I know Amanda's eager to, to discuss sort of the day-to-day operations. I'll, I'll turn it over to Amanda Seay.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So I am Amanda Seay, and I am so grateful to have this position. I think I have finally found my true calling. Seeing these people start making changes in their life is amazing. And finding out that they've never had support like they're finally getting and it's working, that is amazing. Thirteen years, I was kind of on the other side of the table. We did what we could do in probation. We tried to help them and we wanted them to succeed. But we didn't have the time to really dedicate to helping them and really get personal with them. A lot of times, we weren't able to get personal with them. Whereas now I can. I have an open door policy. Everybody that comes in my office knows that they can stay and talk to me about anything that they need to talk about. They can walk in at any time and I will talk to them and help them. So for that, I'm grateful that I get to see and be there for them and witness what they're doing. So to touch on a little bit of it, drug court programs recognize that addiction So to touch on a little bit of it, um, Drug Court programs recognize that addiction is a chronic disease of the brain and it affects the behaviors and impulse controls. Therefore, Drug Court primary goal is not to punish, but it's the treatment of the disease. To motivate treatment, the court grants rewards for progress and sanctions for failures to meet program requirements. So, um, people who complete Drug Court programs are significantly less likely to be arrested again compared to those who are sentenced with traditional punishments. The most successful Drug Court reduces recidivism by as much as thirty-five to forty percent and it results in public savings of at least six thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars on the average per participant. The first Drug Court in the United States began in Dade County, Florida in nineteen eighty-nine. As of today, there's more than four thousand Drug Courts in the United States and similar entities in over twenty-five countries. The first Drug Treatment Court in North Carolina was created in nineteen ninety-five. Currently, there are thirty-three adult treatment courts located in twenty-nine counties within North Carolina and that number's going to grow quickly. Some drug-related statistics for North Carolina. Overdose death in North Carolina rose by twenty-two percent in twenty-twenty-one to more than four thousand, according to the State Department of Health and Human Services. More than seventy-seven percent of the overdose deaths in North Carolina reported in twenty-twenty-one, evidence shows were likely related to fentanyl. There was three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five drug-related deaths reported in twenty-twenty-two. As of September twenty-twenty-three, there's been three thousand one hundred and eighty-one suspected overdose deaths in North Carolina. So statistics for Haywood County, which was reported by the Haywood County Health and Human Services. As of September twenty-twenty-three, there's been six confirmed deaths related to substance abuse. There was eighteen deaths in twenty-twenty-one with twelve pending at the report time. There was twelve deaths in twenty-twenty-two with nineteen pending at the report time. The system that the Health and Human Services use is called NC Detect, which tracks emergency room data. Um, it tracks it all the way across the United, or the state of North Carolina and so residents of Nor-, of Haywood that are seen outside of the county plus in county. There was a hundred and four visits of unintentional medication or drug overdose. Alcohol abuse and dependency was four hundred and twenty-four visits. Acute alcohol toxicity was a hundred and seventy-eight visits. Meth, not limited to the overdose, this is counted meth-related visits, was fewer than five. Benzodiazepine was nine visits, stimulant overdose was eight, and opioid overdoses was So some court statistics for Haywood County. There is forty, four hundred and forty-two individuals with five hundred and forty drug crime cases still pending as of eleven-seven of this year. There's a hundred and sixty-seven individuals with two hundred and two pending, break-in earnings, burglary, larceny, theft, as of eleven-seven of this year. Statistics show that there is a direct correlation between property and theft crimes and substance use. One of the main ways for addicts to support their addiction is through committing these types of crimes. Between October of twenty-twenty-two and September of twenty-twenty-three, Haywood County sentenced eighty-three individuals to an active prison term. For drug charges, there were seventy-two, robbery was one, break-in and entering was four, and larceny was six. Our hope is that more individuals in active addiction start to crave recovery and want to participate in our program. The more exposure our program gets, the more individuals that will know that we're there to help them and support them. Some of the stuff Judge Wigay Garama, he touched on, um, we currently have four females and three males in our parti-, uh, in our program. Three participants are in phase two, while the other four in phase one. There's been nineteen applicants that have applied to our program. Those have not entered our program, um, haven't been either denied or decided not to due to extensive criminal histories or having unmanaged mental health issues that we are not able to properly, um, oversee. Um, we've had a few that has applied to our Recovery Court that do not reside in Haywood County, which is one of the conditions of our court. Um, they made the decision, they just weren't ready for recovery. And then we had a few that got active sentences before they completed our program. We are starting to build a great relationship with other Haywood County agencies, um, law enforcement, EMS, um, the Health and Human Services, NC Works, and Haywood Community College. We also work with Community Resources daily to assist our participants with their needs. Our first participant's been able to reinstate their nursing license, has started attending classes in construction and is a part of, positive supporter of others in recovery. One participant had a heart attack and refused any narcotics in the hospital and beyond. They were honest with the medical professionals regarding being in recovery along with their use of medicated assisted treatment. Another participant has been able to expand their cleaning business and now covers three So our phases, we have five phases and I'm going to just kind of go through this really broadly. Um, they meet twice a month. Um, first, when they come, our DA will review their application to make sure that criminally, that they're a fit for Recovery Court. Then they come to me and I do an assessment with them and also, um, we do evaluations for needs assessments because we only take high-risk, high-need individuals. Then they go to court twice a month whenever they plead in, they comply with the conditions of probation, they do substance abuse and mental health assessment and follow the recommended treatment, they submit to random drug screens, they attend weekly meetings with me, they abide by six P M curfew and an electronic monitoring, they work on obtaining approved housing, and they get a physical assessment through the health department or their primary care physician. They start changing their people, places, and things. To phase up, they have to have a minimum of fourteen consecutive days of negative drug screens and that phase is sixty days minimum. In phase two, they comply with everything in phase one, their curfew gets bumped up to nine P M, they start community service hours, and then they also start community support activities, whether that's through N A, Recovery Discovery, A A, whichever one they choose to do. They also begin M R T or C B I. And to phase up from there, they have to have thirty consecutive days of negative drug screens. Phase three, hundred and twenty days, they've complied with everything in the previous phases, and then they start establishing pro-social activities. Those pro-social activities could be doing, um, fitness, they could be, um, playing on sports leagues, volunteering, um, anything that is out in the community. They also begin employment or schooling or other vocational activities and they start addressing their financial i- issues. They also have to have a minimum of sixty consecutive days to phase up to phase four. Phase four is a minimum of ninety days. They continue with the other phases, but they, um, also, um, start making payments if they have prior payments that they owe the court system and then they continue, um, getting out into our community by volunteering or participating in different events. And they have to, um, have the minimum of ninety consecutive days of negative drug screens. And phase five is our last phase. They, um, do everything that they're supposed to do, but they also start doing a lot of, um, post-planning, seeing what they're going to be doing and building the recovery network whenever they graduate. Um, we want to make sure that once they graduate our program, that they have support already in place to help them if they need it. And I asked the participants kind of what they thought about Recovery Court. And I had one that said, "If it wasn't for Recovery Court, I'd probably be in prison or even worse, dead. This program has helped me when no one else would. I feel like Amanda and Dee Dee are my family and they make sure I'm all right and not struggling or not strung out or dead. This is what Recovery Court means to me." Another one, "To me, Recovery Court means accountability and positive reinforcement. It's nice to have a group within our justice system that is all about our success and no one else's. If I wasn't in the program, I think I would probably be struggling a bit, just with life in general. But having the added accountability and knowing that everyone in that courtroom is rooting for you, I would hate to let all of them down. I feel like the Recovery Court team should get tons of funding and support simply because of what they're doing and the initiatives behind it. Some of the best people I've known have been drug addicts, they just didn't have anyone in their count, corner. Luckily, we do now." Another one, "What Recovery Court means to me? I think it's a life-changing opportunity for the ones like me dealing with addiction. With all the support we get from the ones involved really does help change our ways of thinking. I haven't been in the program long, but I can see the changes it has on the ones in the program and literally every one of them are completely clean and that alone gives me hope that I soon will be just like them. So for that, I think Recovery Court is a very important thing because it helps ones dealing with addiction a hundred percent." This one is a little long. I'm just going to read just a few of it. "What Recovery Court means to me? It's given me the opportunity to redirect my life on a different path, a more positive, meaningful path, a path that works. I'm learning self-worth, how to set healthy boundaries in my relationships, detaching with love in unhealthy relationships along with many other things. If it wasn't for this program, I'd probably be in prison only to get out and repeat the same negative behaviors. But thank God, I was given the opportunity to take a different path." The last one. "Drug Recovery Court came to me as an option at a time in my life that was very broken. Many aspects of my life have become unmanageable. I chose Recovery Court rather than a ninety-nine-six because I needed all that accountability so I could get my life back. It was the first time I felt supported and really encouraged. They could see in me what I had lost sight of and even my family thought was gone. Forcing my reckless ways back to some idea of structure became the first task at hand." And this right here, I want to definitely read to y'all. Um, our judges rotate usually on a three-month rotation. So when Judge Leslie's three months were up, they all got together and decided they wanted to do something nice. And one of the participants is a great artist and as you can read some of their stuff is, they have a way with words. But it says, "Thank you for being a part of our journeys. Thank you for seeing in us what we had lost sight of, or sight of within ourselves. Thank you for guiding us, leading us, and believing in us. You shine like a bright light, helping navigate the struggles of recovery. Emerge from the darkness we have all known too well and find our own light that was dimmed by addiction. May you be proud of your contribution for bravely putting yourself out there and taking part in this new program. We are glad that you took the risk to be a difference-maker. Like a ripple effect, the positive impact of your work is not limited to the lives of us Recovery Court participants, but to our loved ones, friends, coworkers, and every individual that we cross paths with will in some way reap the benefits of your influence through us. That is a beautiful thing. We wanted to express our deep gratitude and admiration of you. The world needs more caring, compassionate, and inspiring people like you in it. It is our honor to have you for a judge. Thank you for caring, I'm forever grateful to you and I hope I will make you proud." That's just a little bit about our Recovery Court. As you can see, we have some wonderful participants and I think it's working. And the biggest thing is, these people have never had somebody to believe in them, their families had gave up on them, most of them have lost their children, they lost their jobs, or they were working very low pay, um, positions because that's all they could get. A lot of them, how, didn't have the best housing, but they're starting to get their self-confidence back and that's one of the first things. So they're starting to believe in themselves and believe that they can actually be a protective member of society and they're, they're doing it and they're going to do great. So, thank you.
I'll be very brief. Um, obviously I cried like a baby when I got this and I don't cry ever. This was so incredibly meaningful to me. Um, and by, let's see, next April, I'll have been a judge for, um, twenty years and was a prosecutor for ten before that, so, um, I mean, I'm not ashamed to say, I've had grown a little cynical about the system and we're just running these people in and out and not making any difference and, and it's hard and it's frustrating. Um, being a part of Recovery Court has changed the way I look at my job. I mean, just seeing the changes that we're helping these folks make is amazing. They come in and they're scared and they're timid and they're fearful and they're ashamed and little by little, over time, you can see their confidence grow, they're, um, they're grateful to Amanda and to the other participants for helping them, they're grateful to get into treatment. Getting over that first hump of really getting sober is really scary, but even before we see that, we're seeing them remove themselves from relationships that are not good for them, um, making positive steps to change their lives, even if, even before they get clean. Because there's people that are helping and that believe in them and are telling them, "You can do this, you've got this, we believe in you." And when they mess up, the one thing that we hear more than anything else is, "I just didn't want to come in here and disappoint you." Like they're, they're really serious about this program and, um, I just want to thank you all for your support of it and we're really, we really are changing people's lives. And I know it doesn't sound like that's a bunch, six, eight, seven, eight, but y'all, over time, it's going to be more. And for each of, each of those people, that's circles of people. I mean, that's their families, their, um, their friends, if they can get other people to come into court, that's amazing. Um, their children, I mean, to me, that's the most important thing. Um, their children can see that they can change and, um, I think that's just an amazing thing and I want to thank you and open it up to any questions. Do y'all have anything you want to ask?
I appreciate you saying that. I know a short time I had in law enforcement, uh, you know, I was there long enough to see that you dealt with certain individuals and then you dealt with their kids and then it's their kids, so I, I know exactly what you're saying. If you can make a difference in these six, seven, eight, i- i- it's far greater than that because it reaches their kids or family members or like you said, even friends. So obviously we've, we've done a good thing here and appreciate y'all's work and, uh, Amanda, appreciate you and I can tell your compassion about it and, and that means a lot, people can see your heart. So thank y'all for what you're doing, let's just keep it up.
Thank you.
I'd just like to echo what Commissioner Rogers said. I think Judge Roy said it well in his opening remarks. Drug abuse, opioid abuse, it's non-discriminate and it goes across the whole spectrum, socioeconomic spectrum, professional spectrum. Uh, I sit on the board of the North Carolina County, uh, Association I sit on the board of the North Carolina County Association of County Commissioners, and our current president's from Burke County, Johnny Carswell. And when he was installed back in August, his presidential initiative is one more thing. He lost a 37-year-old son, had a wife and a grandchild, to opioid addiction. And people look at folks on drugs and say, "Wow, they're a drug head." You know, they're just scumbags of society. No. No, it can affect prevalent families. We all know the opioid settlement just came down the pipe. Still getting funds for that, still having meetings on that. Doctors were over-prescribing these opioids, and the drug companies knew they were addicted. I think if everyone in the courtroom, to be honest, they'd probably know a family member, or a neighbor, or an extended family member that's been touched by this, have a back surgery and get pain meds over-prescribed. They become addicted. I know one guy lost everything. Lost his marriage, lost everything because he had a back surgery. He injured his back working on a forklift. These things, you can't specify one certain socioeconomic or one certain type person. It's broad spectrum. And to see your passion, Johnny Carswell, our president, said, "We've got to do one more thing." He said he asked his wife after he got the phone call about his son's death, "Honey, could we have done one more thing to save his life?" And I think you folks are doing that one more thing. And I see it in your face, and it's very rewarding to see people's lives changed. And to see someone's life changed and put them back on the road, with the adjective in front of that court, recovery. Recovery. We all want to see people succeed and recover and become normal back in society. And I think Commissioner Rogers said, you know, think seven people. Well, think how many lives that could touch. You ran the data. These folks are so desperate to get their next hit of opioid or whatever they're on, substance abuse. They go steal your lawnmower, they steal your weed eater. They in a blind rage to get some money. And so not only does it help personally those folks reestablish their life, but it helps the sheriff, it helps the sheriff's deputies, it helps the court system, it unplugs the court system, it unplugs the jail system, and unplugs the prison system. And to see those levels of success on an individual basis, I can see that that's a very rewarding job you have. Judge, I appreciate your comments. After so many years in the court system, you see results here. And I appreciate that. And I just hope to see this continue as we do one more thing, try to save somebody's life and make them better. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I appreciate each of you very much. I was anxious to see this come, to see it get started and to take off. And I'm anxious to be at the first graduation and celebrate those folks. And you spoke to individuals with parents, I mean, with children, parents with children. And we know that that is often generational. We see that occur over and over again. And so that is a profound and far-reaching success that we'll see come from this. And it's exciting, and I appreciate what you're doing. Passion, somebody said that, the passion from each of you is great. And it's easy to get frustrated. It's easy, I'm sure, for law enforcement to be frustrated with this sort of thing and think that they're winning and we're not. But it makes a difference a step at a time, so I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to tell y'all, I thank y'all for doing this because we, I was lucky enough to get invited to the Recovery Court over in Buckland County a couple of years ago, or whenever, however long it's been. But I went to one of the graduations, and also got to sit through the court, the whole thing. They took me back, and I've been pushing for that ever since then. And I'd heard, I don't know if y'all remember or not, remember Judge Philip Ginn? One time, I sat in court all day just to listen to him. Everybody came up in front of him with drugs. After he got through, he'd tell them, "Sit there." He said, "I'm gonna get in trouble for saying this, but I'm gonna do it anyway." And he was explaining to them, the only people that he'd ever had in his court that got off of drugs had three different things. And this was way before this Recovery Court was ever thought about. And, but he had that vision, you know. You could tell he had that vision in mind to try to help every one of them like that. And I think this is exactly what he was thinking. And I really appreciate y'all doing that because when I went to that graduation, I couldn't believe some of the people that were addicted as they were, that came through it, and even, they had a couple of them. When it first started out, you know, they wouldn't let them work anywhere that they had alcohol or anything like that. And they finally decided that it would probably be better if they did work somewhere that had that, so they could learn to stay away from and stuff. And two of the ladies that graduated the day I was over there, both of them were managers of places that had alcohol, and they were staying away from it, got their kids back, and no problems whatsoever. So I know it works. I know for a fact it works, and that's been, you know, like I say, a long time ago. But I appreciate it, and I think y'all will be able to help a whole lot of people over here.
We hope so.
And I'll just say that I know this takes a lot of extra effort on your part, on the judge's part, to do this because I think you use some of your, I guess, what would be free time or time that you could be doing other things than you do this. So we appreciate, because you guys have stepped up to do this. And I know, I was, you know, in your presentation, you were talking about how it changes the brain, drugs do. And I was talking to a mom, you know, we get to hear these stories. You know, a lot of people, they want to judge everybody. But I get the calls from the mothers who have lost loved ones. But this mother was telling me that her daughter was an honor roll student, was cheerleader in school, and she got hooked on drugs. And she said it totally changed her daughter. And she said, "I don't know what to do." She just didn't know what to do. And so we were trying to do some programs to try to help, you know, just anybody we could. And I know this is one of the ones that's come, have come along, and it's working. I think it's gonna work, and I think it's gonna get bigger as the time goes on. And I know Judge Leslie, I've been in your courtroom before. And you are, I've been in courtrooms before where, you know, the judge is like, you know, like, you know, just makes it, you're nervous when you go in there, and then you're really nervous when the judge starts browbeating everybody. But you make people feel at ease, and that was one of the things I saw in your court. And it was so refreshing to be in court. It was almost like, I didn't mind being in court that day, you know, and everything. Because I sometimes had to go testify. I wasn't in court because I did something wrong. But sometimes I have to testify in court cases. But you always are, and I haven't been in Judge Roy's courtroom yet. I'm sure he's just as good. So, but, yeah. But I can see that your heart is into this and that, and they're gonna play off what, play off what you do because when you are in court, it is a nerve-wracking situation. And then to come in there and have someone, you know, as pleasant as you are to be the judge, it just, it has to affect their attitudes and make them feel better about, you know, what this could be, potential could be.
We're all human.
So, thank you.
We all make mistakes. We're all human.
That's exactly right. Yeah, and the Lord, you know, I've asked for forgiveness a lot of times. And I'll ask for forgiveness many more times, so. But I appreciate all that y'all are doing.
Thank you very much. Thank y'all for allowing us to come and speak tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Santech Republic Services, White Oak Landfill, annual report and Republic General Manager for Western North Carolina and East Tennessee, Steve Slater. And go ahead and introduce your other presenter, if you would.
This is Stoddard Pickroll. He's my new environmental manager. I think a few of you may have met the previous one, but he's been with us for about eight months now.
Yeah.
Tried talking to Mac, too. It's okay.
Supper time.
Time to go eat supper. Go ahead.
Good evening, commissioners. Here to just summarize kind of the annual White Oak Landville report, just from a performance standpoint and budgeting practice and kind of some of the future developments. Last year, we took a little over 80,000 in-county tons. Out-of-county tons was a little bit more than 93,000. Some of the recovered material was just shy of 15,000. Excluding brush and alternative daily cover, we're below 160,000, which is in compliance with our tonnage cap for the landfill. Some of the royalties that were received by Haywood County, you know, the first quarter is coinciding with the kind of third quarter of our calendar year. As you see, it's about 28,000, a bit more for the first quarter, July to September 30th. Second quarter is about 35,000. Third quarter, 36,000. Fourth quarter, just shy of 34,000. So for the year, it's about $133,418. And since the inception of the contract, about 1.18 million. Our permitted airspace for our life of site is 9.3 million cubic yards. The remaining projected permitted airspace to be constructed is 5.8 million cubic yards. And the life expectancy of, as of May of this year, is 24 years based on a three-year density average of 1,462 pounds per cubic yard. This last year, we completed our most recent cell. It's a Phase 5B. You'll see a diagram of that shortly. It was completed in July of this year. We gained about 3.2 acres, coinciding with about 738,000 cubic yards. Good for a little bit, just shy of three years of airspace. This next year, or, excuse me, not next year. The next phase is 6A. We're looking to start construction on that in the middle of 2025, kind of finishing up by the end of 2025. It's a little bit larger cell. It's gonna be 4.6 acres, just shy of 600,000 cubic yards with an estimated three years of site life. This is that figure. I don't know if I can zoom in on it. You might have it in front of you on your computers. You can kind of see in the western portion or the left side of the sheet, that would be our going into Phase 6. In between that, you'll see Phase 5B, that little pie-shaped cell that was constructed in July of this year. Phase 6 is a much larger, we have it sequenced into four events. 4A being the most western portion there, closest kind of to the property boundary you see on the west-hand side. That's Phase 6. And then over the course of the next 10, 15 years, we start getting into Phase 7 on the eastern side of the landfill. So this is our kind of year-over-year grading plan. And you can see the red is where we're grading our waste grade. So we're kind of, we're climbing, if you will. We're creating a top deck in between some of the existing cells where the operations team will be collecting and staging the waste. The green you see on the side, the kind of the shaded, is kind of the expected settlement where you, in theory, would be recapturing airspace over time as waste degrades. So as you go into 2025, 2026, you can start seeing the, beginning to adjust the base grades for Phase 6 while also still operating on the top deck of Phase 5B and even having the base grades climb, excuse me, waste grades climb a little bit higher in the existing cell infrastructure. Over the next year, actually, starting first quarter of next year, where it's getting a little exciting, we're going to be implementing a gas collection and control system. So five years ago, 2018, we initiated our Tier 1 emissions inventory testing, which, you know, kind of gave us a forecast of how much emissions we're emitting from the landfill. And in doing so, we triggered a five-year kind of time clock with developing our GCCS system, Gas Collection Control System. We also additionally ran a Tier 2 test, which is a little bit more of a hands-on-the-ground, or feet-on-the-ground, kind of in-the-field collection. We take a summa canister. We actually ply it at some position on the landfill, and we collect ambient conditions based upon some sort of emissions inventory we're targeting. In this case, at the time, we were south of 28 megagrams per year, but we projected over the next five years that we would exceed the emissions threshold of 32 megagrams per year, which kind of triggered this GCCS implementation. Our plan is, we don't expect to be at the emissions threshold. We expect to be under it. We're gonna rerun that Tier 2 test. However, it's not gonna change our investment into the infrastructure. As you can see, we're, it may not be O.C., but in this, you see where a lot of these lines terminate. Those are vertical well positioning. Those are all designed to a specific depth, to target specific waste streams, to collect your methane, and even your non-methanogenic organic compounds, to control odors and emissions. So some of the investment projects we have for next year is the GCCS system. We're expecting that to get started in Q1, really hitting it to go live in the middle of next year, sometime June, July. We want to have everything online before July so we can rerun those Tier 2 tests and also be in compliance with our NSPS five-year clock. Aside from that, we also are investing in a new office space, Scale House, right as you enter the landfill. Give the guys a little bit of room to work at break room and also invest in just their general work-life environment. All in all, you're, you know, we're looking at, you know, between those two projects, about $2.25 million worth of investment.
Any questions from the board?
Steve, just a note, I mean, you mentioned the cost there. I think our citizens, a lot of times, don't realize the cost savings that they're getting. Not only are we saving close to a couple of million, if I remember the number right, every year, but just savings, like you just mentioned, you know, $2.25 million. That's a huge savings to our taxpayers because we're not having to fund that, you know. You guys are. So I think a lot of times, our citizens forget that, and I just want to point that out. And also, go ahead.
For every new cell that we construct, we're just north of about 460,000 per acre to build a new cell to place waste in. It's, they're not cheap.
And the cell you're in now, which is, well, you're in five, finishing up on five, I guess. But cell six is, how many acres? 15, 16 acres?
Total, it's 16. We kind of do it in four-acre chunks.
So if you run those numbers, you'll see the huge savings that our taxpayers are seeing, which I think we don't preach loud enough. You know, had a conversation last week with a guy that said, "Hey, we need to take our landfill back." And I said, "You gotta wait a minute. I don't know if you know what you're saying or not because it could cost taxpayers a lot of money." But then also, I know you pointed out the 24-year lifespan. And Commissioner Long and myself, I guess, met you guys for over an hour earlier before the meeting. And what you guys explained to us, and I want to get out to the public, is you guys versus Santech are looking at real number, which is the 24-year. Because I think last year, we were sitting about 26. Is that right? 26. So the difference there is, they were projecting, if I'm saying that right, versus a real.
We've used the same methodology since we've taken it over. Santech did try to project out settlement over the entire life of the landfill.
Right.
We only calculate the settlement that actually took place year-over-year. The difference between last year's 26 years and this year's 24 years, we spent a good portion doing those sliver fills on the side of the landfill, recapturing some settlement. You don't get good compaction there. And since July of this year, we've been fluffing in the new cell where we have to put 12 feet of trash in the cell, but the compactor's not allowed to go on it until we get that 12-foot. We just have to kind of push it in place with the dozer, and you're not getting compaction. So as our pounds per cubic yard go up, so will the, it'll slow the depletion of the airspace.
And I'm not gonna tell everybody what you told us back there in that background about how many years that you think we're gonna get out of it. But I tried to make him sign, but he wouldn't do that. Anyway, I know that the number, the 24 number, is more of a conservative number.
Yes, sir.
You know, and I can recall, you know, when I first ran and sit on this board in 2016, I got a lot of complaints or comments that, you know, the landfill wasn't gonna last. You know, we'll be closing it up pretty soon. And, you know, that's why I asked to be on the solid waste board so that I could dig in and look at all the information. I think since that time, I've learned differently. And I think we've got some time there, even though 24 years will go by fairly quick. But I think we've got more time than the five years that I used to hear about.
No, it's in our best interest to work with the county and conserve and do the best that we can to maximize the life of the landfill.
It's what keeps you on the job, right?
Yes, sir.
You need to last a few more years, right, Steve?
Yes, sir.
As Commissioner Rogers said, we met with you guys earlier. And that 24 years with the four- years with fourteen hundred and sixty-two pounds per cubic yard, you know, that is a moving number. It's dry, it doesn't pack as good right now, I understand that personally, but it does settle over the years, so we're hoping that'll go further. But the, we learned a lot in, in the meeting earlier, and I know Republic looks at that real-time data compared to Sandtech. So I'm glad you, you clarified that, and so.
Neither, neither method is wrong.
Right, right. So, and the other, the other thing Commissioner Rogers touched on about savings to the taxpayer, a lot of these targets are not optional, they're required by the state.
Yes, sir.
The gas collection system, over two million dollars, that's required by the state when you reach that certain threshold. So that's an expense that, that would have to, you know, be incurred by the taxpayer. But it, it is a win-win situation for, for both parties, and I see that, see it very clearly. And so a lot of these DEQs on top of the permitting process, I know we talked about some other mitigation factors in the meeting, and, you know, appreciate y'all coming out here every year and giving account. And, you know, this relationship, I know we had some concerns in the meeting, and, you know, we'll work through these little small wrinkles.
Yes.
And make it work, make it work for our citizens. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate it. Thank y'all for coming out tonight and hanging in there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Okay, number, number five is the debt overview presentation. We have our management analyst, Will Scarborough.
Good evening, commissioners. For those in the audience who don't know me, my name is Will Scarborough, and I'm a management analyst here at the county. I'll be providing an overview of the county's debt tonight. And the information from this presentation was compiled from a few different sources, including our annual comprehensive financial report, the county's debt software debt book, and also research materials provided by Davenport, who's, they've come and presented before you, or in front of you before. So this slide shows the county's most recent credit ratings. Moody's, Standard and Poor, or S and P, as it's more commonly known, and Bitch are the major credit rating agencies. The last time that the county was rated, Moody's rated as AA three, and S and P rated as AA, as highlighted on the table. And as you can see, those are some of the strongest ratings you can have as a government entity. And below the Bs are actually Cs and Ds. So as you can see, there are plenty of spots below ours that are non-investment grade. So it really, you know, this, this is to say that these are very strong ratings for a government. So really quickly, I'm going to go over the different methodologies for both the S and P and Moody's that we were graded on. As you can see, there are factor, or a bunch of different factors that really go into these ratings, ranging from institutional framework to economy to budgetary and financial performance. But these are just some of the things so that you're aware of what go into those ratings and how it's broken up. I just felt like it was important to know what goes into that. So this slide shows the historical county debt from the year, or the fiscal year two thousand, and it has it all the way to the fiscal year twenty twenty-three. And basically, what this is showing, it shows the debt as of January thirtieth every year. So it's what we put in our audit, or the annual comprehensive financial, financial report. And what it shows is that really in FY two thousand and three, it starts going up as we bring some capital projects online, and it really peaks in FY two thousand and eleven at that seventy-five point four million dollar mark. And then since then, we've consistently paid it down to now, in FY twenty-three, we're looking at only twenty-nine point four million dollars' worth. And this is talking about the principal on that debt, and this is what we report on in the annual comprehensive financial report, and it's also what Davenport has used in a lot of their modeling in the S and P. We'll talk about that in a couple of slides. So total county debt, clearly you can see that this is over a much longer time horizon. There's a large amount of debt that's dropping off in the next few years. You can see that it's, goes from that twenty-nine point four million dollars to the seventeen, basically seventeen million dollars, and that's in around FY twenty twenty-six. And then it continues to drop off fair, in a very standard rate until it's paid off in FY twenty fifty-eight. And really, what you're looking at with those is we have a few USCA installment loans that have a super-long time horizon. So when you look at that, we're paying off a lot of major debt over a short period of time, and then paying that off over a long period of time. So tax-supported payout ratio, really what this is, is it measures the amount of principal that's paid off in the next ten years. So as you can see, right now, we're sitting at sixty-three point nine percent, and we get a positive adjustment from the S and P when you're above sixty-five percent. And as you can see, after this year, there's a little dip, but basically, that's because we're paying off a lot of debt. So when we do that, it makes it look as though, like, basically what this does is it tries to tell you whether or not debt is front-loaded or back-loaded. So the real, what you're looking at is that we pay off a bunch of debt, so it looks as if it's backloaded, but it's really not. It's just really the time horizon that we're looking at with those USCA loans. So as an analyst, I don't see this as being a big issue, and as you can see on here, after a few years, we come back up and eventually get to that point. But that's really what you're looking at with this. So debt to assessed value, the S and P gives you a positive assessment with a ratio below three percent, and a negative adjustment based on a ratio above ten percent, and we're sitting at point three five. So as you can see, our debt to our assessed value, our value is much higher comparatively to the ratio of debt. So really, our debt overall is very low, and that's kind of what you're looking at in this, which makes it very favorable. And then, in this one, we're talking about debt service versus expenditures. Very strong is under eight percent, and we're sitting at five point four two. And really, what this is talking about is our debt compared to our expenditures that we're spending every year in the budget. And overall, I would say that's also very good, and as you can see, not only are we under eight right now, but we drop even lower over the next couple of years, as we've talked about, when we pay off that debt in the near future. So I can take any questions you guys have.
Well, let me just say thank you for the report. If I read your data right, we're at a twenty-one-year low. We hadn't had this least amount of debt that we have now since two thousand and two, I think I saw from your slide.
Yeah.
So we're at a twenty-one-year low on, on debt. Of course, we, we do have a big project that we've been talking about, seems like forever, coming around on the horizon, so I guess it's a good time to, it's a good, we're in a good position, you know, when, when this project comes to fruition. But so, in any of your analysis, do you have any comments about, I hate to put you on the spot like this, Will, but I think you're capable here.
Yeah.
Federal Reserve's playing around with the interest rates. We, we know what home loans have been going skyrocketing compared to two years ago. Eight point two now, I've seen where they slid back this week, maybe the last two weeks, they've slid back a little bit. So, you know, that's good news for us. So do you see any concern? I mean, it's a pretty glowing report, I, I think we need to tell our story more about how good a job we're doing physically with our taxpayer dollars. But do you, do you have any concern, as we look into this jail project with, with anything? Analysis?
To, I guess, go directly to the interest rate, right? So I've read a lot of different things, and what economists most recently are saying is that in twenty twenty-four, it looks like it will slowly continue going down, and then twenty twenty-five, it looks like it will also drop. So that's just what they're saying right now, but as you guys know, it's kind of been all over the place, right? So I would say overall, you've kind of got to take what you get to some extent, and from my analysis, I would say that interest rates are lower than they were just a few months ago. Ideally, it keeps moving that way, and when you're ready for the project to take place or whatever, then I would say, as long as you're comfortable with where we are and where it looks like we're going to go in terms of what the debt profile looks like, I guess I would say that that's a decision for you guys to make, and that we'll provide the analysis. But just based off of what I presented tonight, when you look at where our debt is, it's way lower than it was just even ten years ago. And I think that being fiscally responsible and managing that debt as we have in the past to put more debt on, I think if you do the same thing, then I would feel comfortable as an analyst, but that, again, is your ult decision.
Thanks.
You pointed out, well, you pointed out too, that a lot of, we have a significant amount of debt that's going to be dropping off, I think, by twenty-six, so.
Yeah.
More so to, to what we're talking about.
Any else? Thank you, Will.
Yeah.
Appreciate that report. Okay, I don't have any discussion or adjustment to the agenda. Does any of the other commissioners have anything? Okay, we'll move to our consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions on the nine items on the consent agenda? Here and now, entertain a motion we approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
One second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say ah.
Ah.
Okay, you want to post? That's unanimous. Okay, then we'll move to our regular agenda. We have a request approval of budget amendment, emergency management, eighty-four thousand one hundred and eighty dollars to appropriate fund balance for the PILT allocation received in fiscal year twenty-three for the calendar year twenty twenty-two. Christian.
Hello, this is for the portion of the PILT funds that we receive, that we pay out to the fire departments each year. We're always having to roll that over from fund balance due to timing, so these are related to calls that they performed on federal land in calendar year twenty-two, but we received the funds in FY twenty-three, and now we want to pay them out to those fire departments.
When will those checks go out?
We're still waiting on responses from a couple of fire departments. So what happens is we collect that data, then we verify it through Shanda Morgan and nine-one-one. She verifies those call numbers to actual dispatch calls, and then at that point, we pay them out. I'm suspecting probably early to mid-December, just because I'm still chasing a couple of fire departments down.
Help it, want any money, maybe that's.
That's what I was starting to say, I think. Did we not have a deadline, that they were supposed to have that information in?
They're usually really eager to give me that information before I even ask for it, so I'm not sure kind of why, why they're not, there's two or three I'm still waiting on.
Thinking, I know when we initially set that up, that's what we did, we said, by this date, we need to have the information in, and like you said, if they want the money, it's not fair to the other ones to hold them up, so we have to look at that going forward.
It's not fair, but the, the way we set up the formula when we approved this dispersment is it's based on, it's a set number of dollars that's divided amongst all the calls. So if we pay out ahead, we're not paying out accurate amounts if we don't have all the data.
Yeah, I guess what I'm thinking is if we say, okay, if you don't have your information in.
Yeah.
And those calls don't count, we'll split the money that we have between the ones that's turned, turned our calls in.
Yeah.
So we have to look at that going forward.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, just a comment, for the people that's watching this or sitting in the audience, that word PILT money, that is nomenclature for payment in lieu of taxes.
Exactly.
And, you know, a lot of our western counties are majority federal lands, Swain County, Graham County, Macon, they have federal lands that cannot be developed, there's no tax base there, and they have to operate fire departments and EMS to go rescue hikers and campers and any other thing that happens on this federal land. So this PILT money, payment in lieu of taxes, is critical that we get that. And this is a federal thing that we rely heavily on our federal, our congressmen to go to bat for this. They have to ask for it. It was amazing to me, you know, I, I sat in meetings and good state legislators, good state senators, good congressmen, I'm not taking their horn here, but they have a background in local government. Some of the best representatives we have are former county commissioners. And I know Commissioner Rogers and I was at a debate one time, where they were trying to fill the eleventh congressional seat, and if I remember right, there was ten or, ten or eleven, eleven people trying to be our congressman. And we were sitting in the audience, taking it all in, and the moderator asked the question, what's PILT money? Just a real simple question. What would you do with it? How would you go about getting the PILT money back to your constituents? And so helped me, me and Commissioner Rogers, our ribs were blue from punching each other with our elbows. There was only one of those candidates that we were going to depend on for asking for that money that knew the answer, and that was State Senator Davis, Jim Davis at that time. And he'd come up through the commissioner ranks, Macon County. He was the only candidate vying for that congressional seat that knew what it was. And I thought that was so remarkable, but, you know, just, that's just a matter of information. Payment in lieu of taxes, and it's critical, especially in the eleventh congressional district. We, we rely on it, but not as heavily as Swain and Graham. I think Graham or Swain owns like eighty percent federal government land, and so, anyway, that's just a bit of information.
And just for a historical comment, we usually pay these out in November, so we're not running too far behind. But yeah, I, I really expect these to get, get this paid out early December, mid-December, whenever I can chase those couple of fire departments down.
And if I remember correctly, this is a little larger for some than it was last year.
Yes, it was seventy-seven and some change last year, so it is a little bit more.
Now, there may be good reason that they don't, you know, I know sometimes have illnesses and sickness that can cause them to be delayed, but also get those phone calls of the, from the chiefs that's turned ours in on time, and they're asking, where's my money?
Where's my check?
Anyway.
That's what I was going to say, maybe those chiefs that have turned them in can put some pressure on those other chiefs that haven't gotten it yet.
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, I, I will say this, we're probably the only county that does this, so I know Brandon and I really wanted to do it and pushed to get it done, so, and I appreciate, I, I guess, was it Julie came up with the, I guess, I, I guess.
Combination.
Yeah, I guess we all come up with a, with a number to do that, and we thought was fair, and so, you know, these fire departments, this is like a Christmas present for them.
Oh, yeah.
They just, but you do have to do a little bit of work to ask for it, so.
Got to be good, you got to do, follow the rules.
Yep.
And get it in.
And we always verify your information.
That's right. Trust.
I have spent some time at these fire departments, and they're very appreciative of this money, and they've bought a lot of good equipment and stuff, gear that they needed, you know, that, that they're not getting in lieu of taxes, as Tommy pointed out, so it's a big help, so I'm glad this board chose to do it.
We're providing, they're providing the service on federal lands. I mean, absolutely, they should get every penny of it.
Case, go ahead.
It's not cheap running them fire trucks up and down the mountain.
That's right.
And that, that would include the park service or the park lands, as well as the interstate falls under that, so. Lots of response time there.
I have your intention of a motion that we approve the, out of one of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Okay, any other discussion, anyone see anything? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, I don't have, thank you, Christian, I don't have appointments or a closed session, does anyone have any other business to bring before the board?
I have a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman. Got a notification Saturday that a fellow commissioner in Wake County suddenly passed away with a heart attack. I believe Mr. James West sat on the committee or two with him, suddenly passed away. And also Saturday, or I guess yesterday maybe, our former First Lady Rosalynn Carter, her and Jimmy Carter, been married, I think, 77 years, she passed away at home. She served our country's First Lady with dignity, and I remember those years when, when she was First Lady. So we, we lost two prominent public figures, and my condolences and prayers to the family.
And I will say happy Thanksgiving to everybody this week, hope you all have a great week for Thanksgiving. Okay, so entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned, everybody be safe out there.